Meeting to order at 6:00 PM. It is Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. This is our business meeting. We are located in the Joe and Idlet Teacher Education Center at 6,557th Street, Beryl Beach. So everyone, we do have seating and we do have the auditorium that's open, if limited seating, if you would like to come and join us here at the meeting or if you would like to come and give citizen input. At this time, if you'll please stand and join me in the pledge. Mr. Meyer, will you lead us tonight?
Absolutely. I plead allegiance to the empire of the United States of America. In this republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we're going to adopt the orders of the day. Are there any items that board members wish to move from consent to action? I need a motion.
Move approval.
Second?
A second.
Do you like to speak to your motion?
No, ma'am.
Ma'am?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, four zero. Is Ms.?
Aye.
Is Ms. Rosario on? And I did fail to mention that we have myself, Mrs. Berenberg, and Mrs. Justice that are here, present in the auditorium. And then we have Dr. Schiff joining us through Teams. And then Mrs. Rosario should be joining us shortly. So let's move on to presentations. Dr. Moore, I have been enlightened that you have a special individual that you would like to introduce tonight?
Yes, ma'am, through the chair. Thank you for the opportunity. Just over a week ago, twelve, nine days ago, we were informed we needed a principal for Osceola Elementary School on a Friday afternoon. We quickly posted the opportunity for interview. We had a number of individuals interview. Very proud of the process. We, as a system, collected member from the teacher union, participating member from an experienced principal committee, and then a final round with myself and Mr. Bass. And we are proud to announce a new principal. And as I have said before, the principalship is a position that I hold near and dear, not only because I was a principal myself of three different schools, not because my father was a principal of the same school for 21 years, not because my grandfather was a principal of also three different high schools in Miami, because it is the absolute most rewarding work you can do, to have the opportunity, to have influence and leadership, and provide support to a group of educators, those who have committed themselves to providing quality education to children. What an expectation it is, what a burden you hold as a principal. So I am excited to announce the new principal of Osceola Elementary School. This is a young man who was an assistant principal for us in Sebastian Elementary School, thought of providing him a new experience at Osceola. This is not the experience he thought he was going to have at Osceola. But I am so proud of how he stepped up to the plate. He has shown himself over the course of the last week and obviously even before, before I knew him, to have a high level of character and response, stepping up and doing things, even though it wasn't his position as principal in the midst of time, to provide leadership where leadership needed to provided, needed to be provided. So I know the faculty and staff at Osceola Magnet School is proud. I am proud, this cabinet is proud, this board should be proud to acknowledge our new principal of Osceola Elementary School, Mr. Dr. Chad Bacon.
Can I get a photo over by the screen? Board members, please, come over to the screen.
I want you to be wearing my SDIRC one. I'm just going to be. I'm no rebel.
All right, ready, one, two, and three. One more. I'm sorry. Okay, ready again. One, two, and three, smile. Got it, thank you.
And Madam Chair, if you would just allow us to have him the opportunity to say a few words.
What an honor, you know. I think Dr. Moore alluded to it. Really wasn't necessarily what I thought I was signing up for. Mr. Meyer called me over the summer to announce to me that you guys be making some changes. Very apprehensive. My roots were in Sebastian for four years. Still had work to do there. But I think that everything happens for a reason. My wife has been strongly encouraging me to apply for a principalship for years. Even more so now when this opportunity arose. I have a very young family, so initially apprehensive. But again, everything happens for a reason. So I feel like I have a strong background in engineering. I have a strong background in everything associated with Osceola Magnet. I went to school for an industrial technology engineering. I opened a steam lab from New York in Fort Pierce, and I worked there for six years. And I believe Ms. Berenberg worked at that school as well, Samu Gaines Academy. And I made the decision to go into administration. I felt that I had a capacity to serve more outside the four walls of a classroom. That was a really hard choice, and it's led me down this path. Osceola Magnet is, I keep calling it a unicorn, man. It is amazing. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the faculty and staff over there for welcoming in with open arms. I am, I am an explorer now, and I'm so excited to put this, put this school on the map. We have really big plans, and we are already at work executing them, locking in sponsors, donors. We're beautifying the campus tomorrow. These, these teachers don't, they don't quit. They are absolutely amazing, and I look forward to meeting the families and the students, most of all. And I'll close with sharing the story that I told to them when we started, is that, you know, no pressure, high performing school, one of the highest performing state schools. My entire experience has been in Title I, teaching, being a leader, and the bandwidth that you operate in at a Title I is so broad. And then I come to Osceola Magnet, and the threshold, there's opportunity there, and we're going to get it. But the threshold is so narrow. And, and the threshold is so narrow that I told them, I told them, I'm like, guys, I kind of feel like the faculty and staff, I introduced myself, and I feel like Dad threw me to the keys to the Corvette and told me not to crash it. You know, I just got my license, so. I shared with them, my biggest fear is letting them down, the parents and ultimately the students. And I made the decision not to let them down and pursued applying for this. So thank you so much for putting faith in me.
Absolutely.
Dr. Moore.
Thank you.
Mr. Meyer.
Dr. Bacon, I would love you to introduce your beautiful family because a lot of individuals can only see your family through the camera. If you would love to.
Do you want to come up? This is Camden. He's two and a half. Say hi.
I want to talk to that mic.
Come on, man. Say hi. This is my wife, Tricia Bacon. High school sweetheart, sweetheart. We're 39, and we've been together 23 years. So been together more than we've been apart.
Wow.
And this is my daughter, Coral Bacon. She goes, she goes to Storm Grove. So super excited. She's actually friends with Officer Ragley's daughter. Keeping her in the family, yes. Really appreciate it. Awesome opportunity. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, that is the only presentation for this evening.
Okay. Fantastic. Okay, citizen input. We, we have the opportunity during COVID pandemic right now that citizens are able to email the school district through citizen input. And today's email is citizeninputaugust11@indianriverschools.org. And we, we only request that all the emails be received by noon the day of that board meeting. As of, as of now, we, we did not receive any today. And then also, we had not received any by noon. So we do not have any that were sent in through email, nor do we have, is that right, Mr. Murray? We do not have citizen input tonight that is here with us.
Mrs. Ruck, may I just make a comment? While we don't have citizen input, I hoped that perhaps we would hear from one of our previous students, Mr. Lance Lunsford, who is here. So I just want to say, we do have some great people here at our meeting. And Mr. Lunsford, Casey and Lance, welcome. And you're doing great things in college.
Good job, yes, sir.
Yes. Mrs. Rosario?
Hi, thank you. This is actually as a welcome to Dr. Bacon. I don't know if he is going to leave early with his family or not.
Dinner.
He's already left.
But I am very happy. I'm sorry?
He's already left, but go ahead.
I kind of figured that. I had my comment up from, right when he was at the podium, which is fine, it's okay. I just wanted to welcome him. But I also wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge Dr. Moore and his staff. When we hired him, one of the questions that I know collectively we all had at some point or another, and in my one-on-one with Dr. Moore, was the vision that he had for empowering our own from within Indian River County and growing leadership, right? Empowering and growing our teachers to become assistant principals, deans assistant principals, assistant principals to become principals, and so on and so forth, to allow the movement, the upward movement and the growth of our own. And that's something that I have found to be incredibly honoring to be a board member of a district where, when movement was happening, even in June, in June, and we saw some of the changes. I mean, the focus was so, not that the focus wasn't, let's recruit from outside of Indian River, but it was all about who do we have from within? Who do we have within our schools? Who do we have already here before we even think about recruiting outside of the county? And I just find that that mindset is just so, it's so honoring. And I love it. It's worlds from where we were, where we had been. And I think that's, it's just one opportunity for us to show, Dr. Bacon is one of those who benefit from being within a district, who now looks at our employees, where they are, and give them an opportunity first. Our priorities are our family and teachers and CWA workers and every administrators. We are all SDIRC stronger together, and this is a perfect opportunity. So thank you, Dr. Moore and your staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we are going to move on to consent. Need approval?
Move approval. A second.
I need a, okay. Mrs. Justice, and then Mrs. Berenberg with the second. Do you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, please. Just to note that the items that we're approving in the consent agenda, some of them were discussed today at the workshop. For anyone who would like additional information regarding those items, viewing the workshop would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, just a comment. Usually I know that Mrs. Justice brings this up, but she made a good point about that, was that we do have some donations. So we'd like to say thank you for those people that have donated to our schools.
Okay. All right, any other discussion on the items? I see Mr. Lunsford's here. Would you, would you like to speak to the item for the dual enrollment? Or did you want to make a comment?
Oh, okay.
Put him on the spot.
I appreciate you coming out here for this, just in case we had questions. But, yeah, yes.
Needed a microphone user, but thank you. We appreciate the staff, the hard work they put in. Several of the items the district wanted included this year, some inclusion and indemnity clauses were added. And the college feels very good about it. For the seventh year in a row, we've kept the tuition at the same exact cost. We have not increased that anywhere to expense for the district. We're excited about that. The numbers of dual enrollment students continue to grow, not only in New York State College, but throughout the state. It's a great opportunity for students to get accelerated credits and move towards post-secondary, which is a great opportunity for them, both CTE, which is the career technical education, as well as academics. So appreciate the opportunity. I'm just here to answer any questions you may have tonight as the agreement comes before you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lunsford. We might have a question. We're going down the, Mrs. Rosario, did you have a comment? No?
No, ma'am.
And then Dr. Schiff? It looks like she, there you are. She is. No questions?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, perfect. I just want to thank you for the partnership. It's, I don't know any other community other than the Treasure Coast that has this wonderful partnership with the quality of education that our students can provide. So I just want to thank you for that. And I, and I'm very excited about, I love Dr. Massey, and we're all going to miss him, but I am very excited about Dr. Timothy Moore that will be coming on.
Copycats.
Of no relation.
We just say Dr. Moore, and we could all just look different ways. Well, we're excited, we're excited for him. We will be hosting receptions and awards for Dr. Massey and his exemplary service. I mean, he's, he's in the Hall of Fame of college presidents. He's been a great influence not only in New York County, but the entire Treasure Coast. But we also are excited about the challenges and the changes. And 2020 continues to bring us all more of those.
When will Dr. Moore begin his?
My understanding is coming up in September-ish, right on the first of September.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here. All right, with that, so we have, I need, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Okay, so we're going to move to action. And we have the approval of Action A, approval of update of the school reopening plan. And we did speak about this extensively during our workshop today, a couple, a couple hours on this. So I would encourage for the, for the presentation, if you would like to go back and learn more, just deeper details. But at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Moore, and he can present the item.
Thank you, madam. I feel like we took a break on, on the item and just now are now reconvening. I would be remiss to say, just in my own internal reflection within the midst of this moment, this is a board that has managed three different superintendents, has led through a pandemic where other districts across the state continue to argue and fight regarding the opening of schools. Here we are, two weeks out from the opening of schools with an empty boardroom. And I think that speaks to leadership. I think that speaks to unity. I think that speaks to the commitment of this staff and the leadership of this board and/or ensuring that we are providing a stronger-together opening of schools. And as we paused at 4:30, I ran to one meeting. A number, member of cabinets ran to negotiations, exploring opportunities to shift improve some teacher assignments or a few teacher assignments regarding getting our schedules the absolute perfect way. So there is no pause in this work. But where we are, I just want to take a second and acknowledge the work that everyone has done. We don't slow down the work, but we should step back from it and just for one second and acknowledge where we are in comparison to other districts. Don't want to knock any other districts, but very proud of where we are and as we chart a very difficult and complex path moving forward. So to set up where we left off, Madam Chair, I think it would probably be in the best interest of everyone's time if I just summarize some of the information that was presented this morning. For those of you who are watching now, as the chair said, we did have a three and a half hour conversation. Each cabinet member had the opportunity to highlight their staffs and the volume of work that they have been doing as we prepare to open schools collectively and collegially to greet our students back within each of our three options. We went through operations. We went through HR responsibilities, some of the logistics and programming operations that we have in place in order to open safely. I will remind the community again, there are opportunities going into next week, the end of this weekend and into next week, to participate in our virtual and live orientations. This is an opportunity to get into the schools, see what the social distancing protocols are, to look at the space that we are providing as it relates to social distancing within classrooms. We have done an absolutely outstanding job in maximizing class size in our brick and mortar core classes. So really reducing class size, so we're proud of that work. We're also very proud of the work that we've done in creating options for parents and the depth of training that we're providing from a district's perspective as well as from the school site perspective, really exploring those options, just not looking about, let's get it done, let's get it done, but let's get it done with quality. Let's get it done with very meaningful instruction taking place. Also very proud of the work that we've done in the creation of this particular document. And I don't work in a silo by any means. As you all know, board, I am very dependent on the cabinet and our principals, but also always seeking opportunities to look at others across the state, in some cases, the nation, seeking input from those who have done this work. Well, no one's really done the COVID work, but in experience. And once again, walk away very, very prideful in terms of where we are in this plan. There are, I think there was 18 districts that opened in Florida this week. And I have spoken, I wouldn't say half of those, probably 25% of those superintendents. And looking at their plans in comparison to ours, we have done the forward thinking, really to look at the what-if scenarios, to do the training on the front end. We have provisions in place, contingency plans to ensure that as we move into, if we have to, and we are the largest employer in this county. And for us not to assume that COVID would not have a touch on someone in our community or family would be ineffective planning. So we have done the planning and will do the training. So when and if that happens, we know exactly what to do. Students know where and how to access their contingency plans that our teachers will create. Teachers will know exactly how to log on to the systems to continue to connect and educate our children, and will be trained on the front end. So we have that continuity of instruction taking place. And this will be an opportunity for us just to implement the plan that's already been created. We spoke this morning about a school site team that would coordinate with the health department. This would be a very specific team. Mr. Seymour, Ms. Hofer, Mr. Bass, who will be working hand-in-hand with the health department, guiding that support for district leaders in certain offices, if that be the case, as well as principals, really to problem solve with them, very similar to a crisis team who has a skill in a certain area, going to and responding to an incident that doesn't happen that often. That is the training these individuals will have. They'll run scenarios, they'll be able to collect the information regarding social, the contact tracing, and really in order to ensure that we're moving swiftly and as quickly as possible. So we are prepared. Where we left off this morning was, we went round robin. Each board member had the opportunity to discuss and ask questions from each of the particular board members. I know there will be some additional questions. I do have a little bit of feedback in our own debrief, some of the recommendations that Ms. Rosario made as we circled back. Ms. Rosario, we do, we added the one revision as it relates to the fever. We're going to make that recommendation or add that recommendation as well as requiring documentation for students when they return. So a medical release from a, from a doctor for students, we'd like to add that as well. Those are two things that we think we can do to give an added, added layer of protection. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll be happy to respond myself or cabinet to any questions or concerns as it relates to our opening of schools.
Okay, so I would like to, if board doesn't mind, continue and go in the order that we were in. And we'll just finish up the round robin that we had from this afternoon. And that will be in the order of Mrs. Berenberg, Rosario, Justice, Schiff, and then myself.
Thank you. I think Dr. Moore answered my questions earlier when I was asking specific questions, and people defer me back to Dr. Moore. I believe I got them all answered, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Berenberg.
Mrs. Rosario?
Is this for a particular cabinet member or just in general?
Dr. Moore or in general?
In general.
All questions?
Yes. One suggestion, Dr. Moore, if you can, when this is done and ready for implementation, I know we talked about communicating, and I know that we're doing our best communicating with everyone involved, all of our employees. But I'm still getting contact, and it's probably too soon. I'm going to assume that it's just a little early. But I'm still getting contacted by teachers who are saying, even at the school level, nobody is giving them information. So I just want to make sure that we have a system in place that really ensures that every single person in the school building will get the plan in its entirety, maybe by email, you know, so they have a chance to review it. And I know that we are probably going to give this to principals to make sure that they go over it with the teachers as well. But that was just something that I wanted to share with you. And can we timestamp the one that will be the final version?
Through the chair, let me respond to your first. That was part of my reflections. We did provide information to principals, really to ensure that they have a clear understanding. My direction to them in our support calls that we have with them this morning is to take that guidance and sit with their assistant principals to ensure everyone understands it. So those who they're charged to lead have a, are provided with the answers. We're also sending a PowerPoint early tomorrow that goes over the response teams that are being created at school sites as well as ours. That will be a presentation that Human School Operations has corrected to be sent directly to principals, so it will be communicated to all. I am very open and honest and willing to receive questions in which we don't have answers to, but am going to have extreme limited patience in hearing our team members not have answers to questions, not have responses to questions in which answers have already been provided. And I think the system that we're communicating worked effectively with 102 schools, so there's absolutely no excuse that our teachers, our faculty, our staff aren't being provided with the responses that we currently do have. And that's not to mean that we don't have, you know, good things or things that we haven't thought of yet, and that's the managing up that we continue to have, but we need to ensure that the information that we have is being provided. I'm comfortable, as you referenced, that that information was provided to principals today. So my expectation, you know, emails that you would receive would be things that we haven't thought of yet moving forward. So I'm comfortable that our principals will take that leadership and make sure it's being provided. The other, in terms of stamping the document, once we begin to push it out, we will, you know, this will be the final version. It will have the correction of the pictures that were referenced this morning, the fever, the inclusion of the fever and the note of the the parents returned to school, the release to return to school.
Thank you. I have two more questions. One is in regard to the numbers that are in Appendix A. This model, based on the instructional model with the number of students that we have in our county and the percentages of those who chose Option 1, Option 2, and Option 3, the numbers on the bottom, it shows that 14,975 students responded, and 90, that's 98% of all students. Do we know about the other 2%? Or is that number, 98%, only referring to those who responded to the model? Or is that the number of students who, what is that number? Because that leaves us with about 299 students left.
Through the Chair, that 98% is when we captured that information. This is the, we now have 100%. This is about a week and a half, July 31st is the date in which we retrieved this information. That was a charge that we gave to principals when we were missing about 35, 40%. And we didn't want to build these master schedules with inaccurate information. So we were able to capture that information. Since then, principals have been able, now that the counselors were back, reach out to families and look at the particular models, but I didn't want to mislead anyone in saying 100 when we gave the expectation to collect the information. And what I found impressive was when we were able to get to the 98%. And this does not include, obviously, the charter schools. That is a subset of numbers. We have worked with the charter schools and review of their plans as we were required by the state in order to ensure that they met the, what was expected from the state's perspective, and we did do that as required, and our information has been sent to the state.
Great. My last question, Dr. Moore, is about visitors and volunteers. So clearly, our volunteers, in the plan that we have, we're encouraging volunteers to perform whatever service that they perform for our students virtually when possible. And then there is a sentence that says, if that's not possible, then they can enter the school building by following, you know, the protocols that you have written out. But my question is about the volunteers. One of the things that's in there, it says, if they are required, but who determines whether a volunteer is required? And how do we ensure that whatever you decide here will be consistent throughout?
Through the Chair, what we've communicated to principals in terms of volunteers is, in fact, is a required service. So looking at services that are being provided in terms of supervision, there are volunteers that are, we have connected, involved in our schools, which is very nice to have. But at the onset, as we open the school year, we're looking at really minimizing the movement in the front office and minimizing the movement throughout the school. So volunteers would be those individuals from the district going in and providing supervision for the entering, exiting, and lunch supervision. There'll be other volunteers that have done that work or very similar work per school. But we've asked principals to take a deep look in terms of who's coming in their schools and really ask yourself, is this an essential service that needs to be provided in order to support the run and operation of the school?
So if we have any volunteers who share office spaces or who are not an essential service, is it incumbent on the principals to, you know, relay that message to them?
Through the Chair, and I think that you bring up a very good point. We're looking into that in terms of agreements that we have across, whether it be an intergovernment agreement or a agreement for external services and shared space, ensuring that those organizations have effectively been communicated with, that maybe that service upon the onset or the greeting of students back onto our campuses may not be something that we should do temporarily as we evaluate the volume of traffic that's coming into our schools. So that is an additional layer of work that we'll be doing through Mr. Bass's shop.
I think that, I think that that's a smart move. Just to limit, we're trying to limit as many people who come in and are involved. If you are not servicing through a required service, if you're not servicing, even tutors, I think are, I would consider tutors to be essential. However, some parents may say, that's someone that at this point, I would just prefer not to have my child around yet another adult. So I think that we certainly need to have sharp eyes on this. We have a lot of volunteers who give great service to our students and our schools, but this may not be the right time. And if we can speak a consistent message across the board, that would eliminate, you know, possible exposure, which is what we're trying to limit. So thank you for that. I don't know if we need to include that information in the plan because this plan does not outline what we've just talked about. It talks about visitors, but there's nothing in here that addresses the volunteers in this manner, the way we're talking.
Through the Chair, I think we can communicate that to principals via email and follow-up and then provide feedback to the board as it relates to the overall impact.
Thank you.
Is that it? All right. Dr. Schiff? Oh, sorry. I think I.
It's me.
Mrs. Justice.
Justice.
Then Dr. Schiff.
Thank you, Mrs. Wart. I just want to say thank you to staff for answering all of the questions today. I thought the presentations were great. It was really nice to hear from each individual cabinet member about exactly the work that you're doing and the part that you play in making all of this happen. It truly is teamwork, and that was demonstrated, that's been demonstrated every day, but it was explained today to us in a way that I think parents would really take confidence in. And so I forget which board member asked for this, but I think it may have been Mrs. Rosario said something about, you know, what, this document, is this for parents? Is this for, who is this for? And I, you know, when I review the document, I look at the fact, there's some great frequently asked questions, and a lot of the questions are answered from the perspective of a parent and student. So, you know, just not, I feel like a lot of parents would take a lot of confidence in this document, and I know it's going to be available online. I just want to make sure that we push it out a bit to parents, too, because I think there are a lot of parents who still have a lot of questions, you know? And while we can talk about teachers having questions and principals relaying that information, we recognize that getting information to our parents is a two-way street. We need parents to search out information, but we also need to make sure that we provide it. So for any parents that are watching tonight, please watch the workshop today. I think the board members asked some wonderful questions, and I think if we had those questions, you might have those questions, too. So please watch that, and then please look over and review once this document, which is called, and I'm just scrolling to the front so I don't get the name wrong. Sorry, Dr. Moore, the name of this is Safe, I'm sorry, Mrs. Maddox.
Safe at School.
S D R C, Safe at School, the School Reopening Plan. So definitely take a look at that because I think it's a wonderful kind of roadmap for everyone to follow. A couple of things that were brought up today that I think I just wanted to highlight for parents, and, you know, we're moving to block scheduling in our middle schools and high schools. Mr. Meyer spoke about that a little bit. That's a lemonade moment for me as a board member. I talk about that a little bit. We make lemonade out of lemons. This situation has been difficult, but there are benefits and things that we can do. Block scheduling, it may have a very, very good effect on student achievement, and so I'm excited to see that. And just thank you to the staff for working so hard. One of the things that we spoke about and that I did question today was the percentage of students returning back to classrooms. And we have about 67% of our white students returning back to classrooms, 58% of our African-American students returning back to classrooms. Is that correct, 58%? I'm sorry, I might have that number wrong now.
Last check, it was around 78 for the white students, around 58 for the African-American students.
78 and 58. So that is at 20 points, which is a large number. And that's not just happening in Indian River County, that is happening across the country. So just making sure, I don't know why that is, and just making sure that we're having, we're reaching out to our parents, and maybe you could talk a little bit, or someone could answer the question for me. If a parent has chosen to keep their child home regardless of race, regardless of anything, what is the communication to parents about how this new plan, Option 2 or Option 3, will differ from the provisional plan from the ending of last year's school? And, you know, just making sure that all parents who are going to be participating in Option 3 have a good understanding and in the partnership.
Through the Chair, I'm glad you asked the question. We will be pushing out information in two different formats. And I think as we have done Facebook Live, I would be naive to think that that is overarching and connecting with all members of our community. Although we have five to six hundred folks on at a time, it's not completely informing with a desire that I would want. We've said from the beginning, this is not the provision plan. This is significantly different within each of the particular models. Moving forward, I think, A, communicating to principals and teachers within each of those models, so they, who, those who stand on the front line are communicating that information is extremely important. The capturing of the remaining, to move us to the 98% completing the selection process also was phone calls, principals, counselors on the phone, going through those options, helping them make that selection. Mr. Meyer and his team will be conducting a Facebook Live tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM right here. Tune in live because what they're going to do, they have been collecting questions through Ms. Maddox's office, but they're also going to answer questions as they come in. So that's an opportunity in looking at, I know the focus is Option 2 and 3, but we will take, they will take questions for Option 1. We're also pushing out information. Has it gone out yet, Ms. Maddox? Mr. Meyer and his team have put together a overview of Option 2 and 3. Has that gone out yet? During the Facebook Live, it's the Rick Meyer Show along with his team. So very intentional in sharing that information moving into next week. The following week is the orientations, virtual orientations for each of the schools. And when children get in, if they have not been appropriately informed, they will come to an understanding relatively quickly, and I'll take this advantage, this opportunity here. This is a different model than the provision plan. As Ms. Justice stated, we created that plan relatively quickly to move through the end of the school year. It was flexible in the creation, and teachers were the authors of that plan, which was unique to the school district of Indian River County. Here, this is us getting back as we always should and will be aligned to the standards, providing instruction and assessing in connection or alignment to the standards and then scaffolding or differentiating that instruction to pull students to the standards. And that is complex in these two new virtual environments. So there's still a lot of additional training for our teachers to ensure that we open ready to do that complex work. And as we move forward, we will continue to be flexible. And we will work with principals, our data warehouse, Dr. McMahon, will continue to inform in looking at attendance and looking at progress and looking at student performance as we continue to conduct assessments, as we continue to look at grades and performance and use that information or that data as our superpower, really to inform counselors and principals. We have a problem in Week 3 or Week 2, and that's fine because now we have plenty of time to correct and modify that particular problem, which may include, hey, come in really and look at our brick and mortar experience, look at the reality that we're providing, or, you know, let's shift or modify the virtual experience to get it more meaningful or make it more meaningful for that particular student. So we fully intend to do the work that I came here to do, which is creating us as a literacy capital of America, solid quality instruction taking place. It's going to look very different than I thought it was going to look eight months ago, but it will be quality work. I know Mr. Meyer has got some stuff to add, please.
I just, I couldn't concur more, Dr. Moore, but I would just ask everybody, board members, cabinet, principals, teachers, parents, students, not to make any assumptions about what's going to happen for this for any type of student. Just because a student has been high performing in the past doesn't mean they're necessarily going to be successful in this new environment. Just because a student that was possibly lower performing and struggling in the past doesn't mean they will continue to struggle in this environment. There's empowerment and choice. One of the big differences between the fourth quarter was that everyone was thrown into that situation, like it or not. Every teacher was thrown into that situation, like it or not. With this, we've given, we've given choice, and I'm excited for that. The parents, and you mentioned Ms. Justice, and we were, as Dr. Moore says, in front of the data collection, so we can do this, we can parse this out, we've been doing it for weeks. But the choices are unique choices to families, and I can't answer that question for, you know, any one family, why they're making that particular choice. They're making the choice they feel is best for them, but I'm proud to have offered that to them because they should feel empowered. So we can't just assume success. Oh, you were a Level 5 student, you're in geometry. No, no problem, just do the virtual. They may struggle. The reality is, they may struggle, and we may need to support the higher performing students just as much as those who historically have been low performing. We saw students in the fourth quarter flourish. They, I mean, I teased with you guys, I know we talked about already.
You were to start that conversation.
But some of them, they enjoy it. I mean, they really, it was less distracting. And so, and that's the work that we have to do, to Dr. Moore's point, is we have to ensure that this works for each and every student and ensure that everything that we've built is supporting each and every student, and we don't lose focus and make any assumptions. We can't do that. We owe them too much to give them what they need. And so very excited about that as far as, you know, where we'll be going.
Wonderful, and that leads me to my next question. Thank you for that. I'm so glad that we gave parents choice in our schools, and it's something that we've been working very hard to do across the state of Florida. So thank you for that. The next question would be, if a parent chose virtual learning because they felt that their child did well at the end of the school year last year, or they have some concerns about COVID and about the schools and safety, but they're at home and they're working and they see that their child is struggling, or the teacher sees that a child is struggling, what will that look like? Will they have to wait nine weeks to be able to get back into a classroom? How, what will, because there are a lot of parents who made a choice, but, you know, still feel a little nervous about it, right? It's a big responsibility as a parent to make that choice.
Absolutely, and Dr. Moore alluded to this. I mean, we have certain gates that we want to make the bulk of those transitions, so as we spoke earlier, that we can plan for the reintegration of the students as far as, you know, with their friends and their new teachers. But absolutely, on a case-by-case basis, if it's just really just going the wrong direction, we have to take action immediately. And so I do think that there is wiggle room, certainly within the master schedule to make those case-by-case adjustments to be best by kids. But we will, of course, you know, utilize all the interventions and additional support, you know, that would try to make it work because that was a choice that they initially chose. We don't want to give up on things just because they may not be perfect, we'll want to improve them, but ultimately, of course, I mean, it's just like anything else, you, we do. You, you, we do change schedules, we do move teacher assignments for kids at different times. You don't want to do it, but if it's the right thing to do, it's the right thing to do. We're always going to err on the side of best by kids.
Sure, absolutely.
So we'll find a solution.
Thank you.
Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I have a bunch of questions that we did not get to this afternoon, so I'm going to ask you to bear with me. They are predominantly directed to Dr. Moore. So my first question is one of the things that you've mentioned is that teachers appear to be in good shape moving forward with the new year, that there was a survey that went out and your experience at schools and with teachers is that everyone is moving forward pretty well. I've heard a few things to the contrary, that there are some teachers who are quite nervous, who are more worried about going back to school. And one of the concerns is that prior to your tenure, there was a history of teachers being afraid to speak out for fear of some form of retaliation. So while I don't believe that may be the case moving forward, there is some legacy of that. Can you speak to a way that teachers or others in the district might be able to communicate openly and honestly about their concerns without fear of any form of retaliation or intimidation? And what I'm asking for here is less kind of the standard response of we don't do that and more the response, because that is the response we tend to give. But the fact is, it happens. So my concern is I want us to really have an environment where teachers who are experiencing stress or fear or overwhelm about what this involves, both about their wellbeing and their family's wellbeing and their students' wellbeing, how they're able to communicate that in a way that feels like they're being heard, they're being responded to, and they're safe to express that.
Through the chair.
That's only question number one.
Okay, I know, here we go. That is creating an organizational behavior and belief that, that sharing of information modeled by me informs our work. So for the last two weeks in the midst, just solely focusing in on the reopening, has been conversations or pushing out information, seeking input and feedback. And then modeling to the entire district, here's what I learned based on the information that you shared with me, and here are my changes of behavior or design in terms of how I facilitate or, or run my, my day or, or work. So really modeling the practice first and foremost. Retaliation in, in terms of, you know, oh, I'm going to get you for getting that, really is adhering to our guiding principles and displaying the, what the reality is, not trying to create a, you know, you know, I, I, I don't know how to say it without being short or blunt, but I'm trying to get to the truth and then respond to what the truth is regardless of whatever that truth may be. So really digging down to where the problem is and then solving the problem and working at it from a true heart of trying to solve the problem. And I think some of that comes over time. I think when you look at how we have created ourselves to work with our unions, to solve problems, be transparent, really set expectations around, you begin to see individuals' behaviors change or, or shift. And by no assumptions am I trying to create a reality or a false reality. We know there are still complex problems to solve. And as I, I referenced quickly, cabinet members at 4:30, the meeting that was being referenced was an opportunity to sit with our teachers' union, I saw Mike in the background too, on Teams, and really look at some master scheduling problems that we were having with some of our teachers and really figuring out, okay, well, what do we have to do to get this right? And, and I think that becomes the norm, that becomes the conversation. And I always, you know, tell them frustration because you are not informed or you think you can't speak is a feeling we should not, as an organization, allow ourselves to have. We need to be able to speak up. I think the creation of the advocacy office under Mr. Seymour's leadership is yet another opportunity or avenue for individuals to provide information. The level of connectivity that individuals will have to me, the, whether it's the superintendent's ESE Advisory Panel, whether it's me just picking up and calling X number of principals every Friday to see how they're going, working with student groups. For me as an organizational leader, it's just not seeking input on the organization's growth from those who report to me. It's ultimately circling back down and seeking that information from those who are actually doing the work and then ultimately allowing them to see the change. So it is continuing to grow that, to grow that belief as we continue to do the work. And, and we don't do that.
So to follow, sorry, to follow up on that, I am not a big fan of the word should because, you know, how we should be is often not how we are. So I know that this is a process and how we move forward, it, it may take a while until people trust that there is in fact a new environment. What I want to make sure is that there are vehicles to receive that feedback anonymously if, if need be. I know you sent out a survey in which I think 236 people responded, or it's teachers responded, which is, which is only, it's some, and I believe the responses were generally positive, but it's out of 1,100 faculty, it's still only a relatively small percentage. So I want to just ensure that there are vehicles for teachers to communicate, to air their concerns, and that we build that, that trust and that confidence, not as a should, but as a we are and we will. And I, I want to, I want to feel assured that that's happening as well and that teachers are, and other, and staff members are feeling that. I don't know that that requires a response. It's mostly me pontificating. To, to that end also, similarly as Mrs. Justice mentioned, that we have a similar vehicle for parents to get their questions answered and, and be assured also. So in whatever way that is, that we know that there is a particular place and space where parents who have concerns make sure that their questions get, get answered. And, and maybe there needs to be a separate portal for that or a separate email for that or some structure so that we make sure those things are happening in a way that not only creates a vehicle for it, but if there is some fear, that it can be done anonymously if need be, or, or create some structure for that. So my other question is specific to a couple of things that were mentioned this afternoon and that I know you and I have talked about, but I want to give an opportunity to say publicly. In the document and in the presentations, you talked about that we will look at closing schools in, working in conjunction with the Health Department. When 5% of students or 20% faculty at a particular school, that, that would be the threshold for testing positive. When we talked about that, I know you said that that was a dynamic measure, not a static one, and I, I would like for you to address that publicly a bit to allay some concerns.
Absolutely. Through the chair, that was me having a desire to be intentional, really looking at providing the community with a gauge that we are not just be, remaining silent on the topic, saying that we will consider a case by case scenario. Will we consider a case by case? Absolutely, but we need to look at the reality at each particular school and we need to have a gauge. So other districts don't have those particular parameters set in place, whether it's the 5% of all or the 20% of faculty. But we need to really begin to gauge that conversation and be transparent and forward thinking. As we move through that reality, in some scenarios, it may be less than the 5%. We may overreact to be proactive to minimize exposure in certain situations. The one thing that I have learned, and it's a quote from you, that the, you know, being able to do that long-term planning i- is something that you just can't do anymore. But we really needed to have some criteria in place, some, some criteria in some cases that superseded, not superseded, but extended or went beyond the reach of the Health Department. We had a more critical system in place ourselves so we can give assurances that we have our eye on that particular area and will implement a plan when the time is appropriate and not creating the plan in the midst of what could be that crisis.
So what I hear you saying is that, that 5% and that 20% are not necessarily definitive target, targets. They're parameters and we will work inside of each one and be conservative in our approach to, to closing schools if we have to, but maintaining everybody's safety. And we're not waiting until a threshold of 5% or 20% before we make that decision, correct?
Through the chair, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Earlier today, Mrs. Rosario had some comments on the document about students returning to school when they were no longer exhibiting symptoms rather than when they had no symptoms or, and a doctor's note. And one of the things that we didn't talk about was that, was contagiousness. Because the issue here is not simply the appearance of symptoms, but it's the point beyond which someone is no longer contagious. And you can still have, for example, a runny nose, but not be contagious. So what I'd like to do is, is work into the document a threshold, some better understanding of having students or adults back into the building when it is beyond the point of contagiousness. They may still have, for example, a headache or a dry cough or a runny nose, but that doesn't mean that they're contagious. And I've seen various conflicting comments on this, so I'd like to hear from the Health Department exactly when they have determined that someone is no longer contagious. Can we find that out and put that into the document?
Through the chair, the language that we have is, is a perfect example. We will now require a release whether from our staff as well as from our students. What's currently in the document, docu, in the document as it relates to students is the CDC recommendations, which is significantly less. You take a test, you stay home for 10 days, you don't have those particular symptoms over the course of 10 days. Last day, no, no temperature, you return. So what we are requiring is one additional step further that we feel comfortable with that when you go to the doctor, very similar, you can get that release from your, from your doctor. So we are going above and beyond what is being recommended, recommended, trying to protect the environments within our school.
Thank you. And just to be clear, we talked about it this afternoon, Mrs. Rosario mentioned a threat, a threshold of a fever of 104. I just want to clarify, it's 100.4. There's a big difference because we're not sending our, 104 is much higher than 100.4. Just want to be clear about that.
Through the, correct.
Lastly, I appreciate Mrs. Justice's comments about the difference between our African-American students choosing to come back in the classroom and our white students choosing to come back into the classroom. And I think there are myriad reasons for that. But whatever it is that I think is irrelevant, what I'd like to do is ask that we, that we dig into this a little bit and we do some reaching out either directly to parents or through surveys or focus groups or something to try and find out some of the reasons why there's this disparity in the numbers. Because I think it speaks to deeper seated issues in the district and I think it's relevant to all of the work that we've been doing with our African-American Achievement Plan, where we're really digging, we're trying to dig into some of the data behind the numbers, but also some of the reasons why there are such different experiences between some of our white and some of our students of color. So I'm, so I'm actually making the request that we dig into that and that we analyze the data for why parents are choosing what they are and that we're able to do that fairly robustly and analyze it by race as, as well.
Through the chair, that is work. Ms. Dampier has already begun through Student Services with very similar wonderings as we begin to open, really begin to collect the information on why you chose the model, digging in at a much deeper level, collecting that information and sharing it back and really reflecting on what we learned from that information as it relates to cultures within our school, how welcome students do or do not feel. I, I agree, it's very telling at the initial glance, but it is very intriguing to gain a deeper understanding from those students and families as to why those selections were made. As well as, as we move through, we're going to have to continue to kind of take the temperature of how we're feeling, implementation, follow-up, support, communicating progress with parents. It, it is going to require the creation of new systems and communicating and gaining a deeper understanding. And I, I won't assume anything, but I think that will provide, as we collect that information through Student Services upon our return, I think it's going to be very meaningful information to take the next step in the creation of school improvement plans when they create that culture equity goal, which is the first goal and which they're going to address. It will help and inform the perception the students have of the reality within schools.
Thank you. That's it for now.
Okay. I'm going to go on to myself and then we'll go back around to the other board members and, and circle back, okay? So I'm, I had a lot of my questions answered this afternoon, but, so I kind of have popcorn questions here. Bear with me, Dr. Moore.
Not a problem.
Let's see. So help me through this thought process. We were putting in a stipulation that a child can't come back to school unless they have a doctor's note, correct? If...
As it relates to COVID. Now, you can be sick, come back, there, there's different reality. Once we have that information, yes. So you need to think typically attendance at a, a school, 93 to 95%, that's, that's the average, still not good enough, as good as I would like it, but those students come back with a note. So I'm sure all of us as parents, you know, please excuse Madison Taylor, she had this, that, or, or the other. And then we'll, we capture those and collect that, Ms. Dampier. That, that is in fact the, the process here. I, I don't want to, I'm speaking from a historical perspective of, of a different county, but that, that is the...
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I get that correct. What?
In terms of when you're absent, you bring a note from your parents?
Yes, you bring a note and you have a certain number of days, usually three days, to bring a note from when you're absent. And that's outlined in our Code of Conduct, plus we now have an attendance manual that is displayed for parents to see as well.
But once we have the, the COVID symptoms and parents are, are letting us know, that would be the, or the Health Department lets us know, which would be the more typical route in that particular scenario, then we would work with the families in terms of having that release. So there is, you know, a willingness, willingness for families to tell or self-report to our principals or through the Health Department notifying us that you have a, a COVID case. That is when the release would, would kick in, when that information has been shared, whether it be through the avenue of the family sharing at their own discretion or at the, through the Health Department.
Okay, so I'm going to just ask this question because I think it's probably one of those situations that's going to happen. Let's say I'm a parent, I've already used up, you know, all my sick days taking my child to the doctor, I've been off work for two weeks, I can't afford to go back to get the doctor's note. What are we going to do?
Through the chair, the honest answer is we're not going to wait two weeks. We've already created the frequency in which we'll be reaching out through the school counselor, through the, our, our health assistant in schools. So we'll be working with them as we move through the process and be able to revolve those situations or problems before they even become problems. So it, it's a, it's selling the system short if the Health Department knows we have a case, even though they may be at home with symptoms or without or feeling sick or feeling fine. We now have counselors in all of our schools. We provide a tremendous amount of resources in terms of social, emotional, so we need to be connecting on those students in problem solving through our Health Department to eliminate those kinds of concerns.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Let's see, Dr. Schiff, I already... Let's see, Dr. Schiff already asked about the 5% and the 20%. We've already talked about the quarantine, the length of time is up to 14 days, correct? Wellness and temperature. Okay. Here's my question about our seating on Focus. Can you explain this? So who's creating the seating chart in the classroom? The teacher is creating that chart?
Through the chair, that is a resource that's been available in Focus to capture that information. So if you were to imagine, in, in the best case, the way I can explain it best is I have a substitute back many moons ago when, when I taught, it was part of the information you left in your substitute package at the pre-planning days. So the substitute knew where everyone sit. The way this is created, you can drag the teacher desk into one piece of the room, it can be printed, it can be stored, and we've added the feature to do that criteria. So it is a, created by the teacher and will be updated throughout the year as needed by the teacher. So typically, you know, it's not typical to say, okay, you, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Bass cannot sit together anymore, Ms. Dampier, you now sit with Mr. Fay, or, you know, that, that kind of thing.
No, that's what, because we have to keep track of this now because of, with just tracking the cases. I was just trying to figure out how flexible is this and how user-friendly is this chart to use because there is going to be situations that you move kids multiple times in the day.
It, and it's, we have to keep it current and that is a school site behavior that we're going to have to constantly push out and, you know, ask teachers. Like when I was a principal, I would send them things every Friday, make sure, ba, 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 ba. That will be half, because just out of behavior as a teacher for X number of years, you switch a seat, you may not be keeping a, a seating chart. I don't, I don't think it's probably, wasn't a practice here. It, it wasn't, so you're going to have to update that information. Because our goal is to have that information readily available to maintain confidentiality and to maintain the speed in which we're able to respond, which really is something I think we're going to get right much in comparison to other systems.
Okay. I do, okay, so that, I'm happy to hear the flexibility. I just, sorry, I just know how much work it's going to be for our teachers trying to keep up with this seating chart, but it's, has to be done.
Most of them are familiar, most teachers do, it's, it's part of the norm. They do it within the first 10 days because they want to know who their students are. So it's normal. Instead of, with Focus, you can go and drag before you had to create these little boxes. We all did it, so we're all laughing because we had to create boxes to conform to our classroom. Now, this is just looking at your classroom, you put the desk up here, you can put the, a, a table here. So in actuality, it's a much, much updated version.
Well, this is where my mind's going with this is, I have an 11-year-old that in his, it's, it's nothing for him to be switched a couple times a week to move away from so-and-so because he's talking too much. So like children like my, my 11-year-old, that teacher's going to be moving that, that seating chart quite a bit.
They might be further away now, though, so the talking might not happen as much.
Yeah, and I think...
And it'd just be louder.
Through the chair, I think that is the...
I've got one, too, so, got it.
That, that'll be the, the sad truth that, you know, some of the, what we've been moving to is that 21st century learning, students working together, collaborating together, working with your shoulder partner and creating those spaces with, with that group work. And then, you know, having them teamwork and solve some problems. And we're going to, going backwards, moving into this year with the independent work six feet apart, it will be louder because we're going to try to continue to create some of those spaces and those kinds of conversations because that's just what good instruction looks like versus independent, work at your desk, do this work. We're really trying to walk away from that. So it, it's going to be very, very challenging for our teachers. You are correct about that.
So with the development of the COVID protocol, this to me is the plan, and then there's a written protocol, correct? Or is it just...
Through the chair, when you, as it relates to the protocol, we will work with, that will be presentations that were provided to principals really to create their specific plans, who's doing what, when we have to respond to the school.
Okay, so, but we have a development of a COVID protocol, I wrote this down from that earlier presentation for caregivers and parents. Is that, is this the protocol for parents?
No, that, that would be the manual. So in, in terms of the protocol, the protocol that I, if it was me speaking, was referring to the action that the visiting COVID team, with the district team would take, the action that they're going to follow upon arrival. And the protocol that principals knew they would have to, what they would have to do ahead of time. So when we convene at a school to look at the environmental reality in terms of who has to social distance, that protocol has been followed to quickly determine who needs to go where, who needs to make the communication, that was the protocol that I was referring to.
Okay. And I am happy through the presentation to learn that we are going to have the no-touch-water bottle refill stations at least. Did we say one at each lo, each school? One? And is that something that we could try to apply for a grant and try to get more of?
I know that the PTAs really, the ones that had them, the PTAs paid for it.
Through the chair, we'll definitely explore opportunities for funding. Mr. Fagan and I have already been talking about areas that we can take that, those funds and get those, but it will at least be one per school, possibly more.
Okay. So I think that's, that's valuable. And then also, you know, part of the shopping list this year for supplies is a water bottle, or a couple of water bottles because, you know, the, the kids are going to, help bring them home, some of them. And a lot of the questions and emails I've been getting sent to me relating to air quality and what can we do to clean and filter the air during, you know, the classroom setting? And you explained that today, and I just want to make sure I understand this. We have these filters that are in our air system that are in the room and they're a MERV rating of nine currently, correct? And they're going to a 13?
That's correct.
And, and the 13, if you said it was a 99% filtering, can you explain that to me again?
Okay, the, the HEPA filter is the 99%. And we, to retrofit our systems for that is just, it's really not possible because we have some older systems. The MERV 13 does cut down on the diameter of the particles that can come through. So the COVID particle is, I believe it was .125. The MERV 13 eliminates three, or .3 to .1. So it will capture some of it. But it's just, it, again, that is, we're talking about such a large space, even if we were outfitting everything with, with HEPA filters, you're, you know, I think about a gymnasium or, or cafeteria, there's a chance that air particles will be floating through there that will never get to go through that filter.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
But we are, with what we have to work with, we are doing the best we can as far as trying to provide that, that protection.
I appreciate that, and I appreciate the presentation today. And I know we've been asking our questions as we go along, so I appreciate answering all those. And I, I too want to, I wanted to ask Dr. Moore, when will you have the updated with the new revisions on the website? And will that be on the homepage?
Through the chair, the, the recommendation approved with the recommendation of, of changing the pictures, adding the fever, requiring the note for those students who have COVID are very minimal. We have it up tomorrow and disseminated probably before 10 o'clock. And it would be on our webpage. It would be on our webpage.
Okay. Is there a capability, Mrs. Maddox, to have the link to, to the plan and, and text, text that out to the, the parents so that... I just want our parents to know all the work and all the, you know, all the details that this plan has that, you know, the team here has really tried to think of every possible scenario. And the goal is really to, the parents to feel safe and in their, as safe as possible sending their child into one of our buildings. We want them to feel reassured that we're trying to answer all the concerns. So I just want to make sure that they get this in their hands and they, they can take a look at it.
Through the chair, absolutely. I actually have a test scheduled for tomorrow and it, we've had our reopening page on the website. If you go to the graphic right on the homepage, it says school reopening plans. And I've been trying to push that information out because that has every Facebook Live session, presentation, every update that we've gone through since the beginning that anyone can go to and see. But yes, when we get the updated version up tomorrow, we'll have the text message go out that'll link right to that page with everything on it.
Okay. And one last question, because we did have to, the schedules did get created and finished up today? Is that right for secondary, this class schedules?
The intent is for them to go live at noon tomorrow.
Oh, noon tomorrow, okay. And that's, that's middle school and high school?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That, that wraps up my questions. So, Mrs. Rosario? And then Dr. Schiff?
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm here. I have a question about the numbers of students who took the different options. Earlier, we talked about, or I think it was given to us, 58% are African-American, or 58% of our African-American population are, have chosen online. Was that the right number?
No. Have chosen to come back.
Did I get that right?
Yeah. Fifty, fifty, and that maybe, don't, there maybe fluctuate a little bit, but, but in that range, yes, that's, that's the, the range, there are 58 are coming back to brick and mortar.
Oh, 58 are coming back to brick and mortar. Do we know how many of our Hispanic students have selected to come back to brick and mortar or chose one of the virtual options?
He's looking for that right now.
If you give me a second, it takes a little bit, and this is district-wide, so the charters are in there, too.
That's fine. Appreciate it.
But we can get that, if you want to stand by, I'll do the math real quick because it doesn't have the filter. We had to get on Dr. McMahon and put a percent filter on there. I asked the world of it.
Yep. So while you're looking for that, I'm mentioning this because it's, it, yes, sir?
64% are returning brick and mortar, Hispanic.
64%. So I am very interested in, I wonder if we can follow these cohorts. I, I don't know if this is, I guess I'm thinking out loud. I'm wondering the, the outcome of following these cohorts, those that return to brick and mortar, even for the short time, for the nine weeks, versus the, the, any of the virtual options in terms of their academic and their social and emotional growth. I, I don't even know if we can do that at some point, but I'm just curious what the outcome will be at the end of all of this, where they were and where they will be. There might be something for maybe Dr. Schiff or someone in the academic arena to study. But I am, I mentioned this once before, I think it's very important for us to take this document, once it's finalized and translated into Spanish. We have a high enough population in our school district of parents who, whose first language is Spanish. So I think that it would be right of us, only right of us, to provide this in Spanish. Is that, can we have that on the website, Dr. Moore? I don't know who this question would be for.
Mrs. Rosario, yes, we absolutely can. We can send that to our translation service to have that translated to Spanish as we have some of our other presentations and communications that have gone out. We've been making sure, even our health and safety videos, they're all Spanish versions of those as well.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Is that it? Dr. Schiff?
Yeah, two quick things. I, I really appreciate what Mrs. Rosario just said about making sure our stuff is translated into Spanish. And I, I'm hoping that we simply get into the habit of doing that for all significant documents. This, this actually shouldn't be a question that we ask at board meetings, it should be a natural way that we do things. So I'm hoping as we move forward, I know we're overwhelmed right now, but Spanish-speaking parents shouldn't actually have to ask for the document, it should be provided to them. And I, and I know we're working towards that, but I'd like to see it something that is just assumed to be true moving forward. Is that, Dr. Moore? I see you moving your hands. Is that something we're already doing and I'm just not aware of it?
Through the chair, I, I was just reassuring or getting, looking for confirmation from, from Ms. Maddox, and it was very hard to see with the mask on whether I was getting it or not. Regarding the fact that we already do that, I, I will be honest with you, I am so conditioned to having everything that we produce already in three languages. So I always struggle, especially upon my arrival, as to, what do you mean? We, we don't have it, we have to go. It became something that was just, you know, done to create that system. I think Ms. Maddox created that system during the first shutdown, and, and it's just a matter of maintaining, which I'm comfortable that we're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Schiff, and to, just piggyback on that through the chair, we have been working with our, the service that we have to translate the different documents, and we do our best with the help of Lori Webb to embed things into the website. And when they're embedded into the website, anyone can use the translation that's available on our website to translate into, I think, like 32 different languages. When you have a PDF, that's when you have to send it off to be translated, if it's a PDF that's stored in the bottom PDF bank on the website. So along with that, and with the help of some of our staff members and Mr. E., we've been communicating our connected calls in Spanish and doing our best to stay on top of that and translate everything we possibly can.
Thank you. Lastly, I want to just come back to something Ms. Dampier said. There was a comment earlier about we would wait up to three days for a doctor's note. Did I hear that correctly?
That wasn't a doctor's note, it was if a kid brought in a note from being absent.
So, so I'm not sure I'm getting this right. So a child could come back from being absent after having been sick. They can come back in and we will need a doctor's note three day, we will wait up to three days after they've already been at school to get, to have the doctor's note saying they're no longer ill or contagious?
No, that wasn't pertaining to the COVID. It was for absences, period. If a kid comes in, they have days to bring in a note so they can make up the work and get excused for that work.
Okay, but, okay, so that does not refer to COVID. In order, if somebody had a positive diagnosis for COVID, they would have to have a doctor's note before they're back in the door at school, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Got it? No one there, Kama?
Yeah. Are we taking turns, or what are we doing?
Mrs. Barrenborg and then Mrs. Justice. Is Mrs., what orders there? Mrs. Barrenborg?
I, I thought we were just going again through the board members.
Two quick things. Dr. Schiff had mentioned about faculty concerns about being able to express their feelings and their thoughts. And I'd just like to say thank you to those that have. I also would like to say thank you to those that reach out and call board members. You know, that's part of our job, is to address concerns that we have that are out there for faculty, for community members, for anybody. And I appreciate those people that do call me and say, you know, I want you to know what's going on, or I want, I want to find out about this. Because I have a... Because I have a way of bringing that up to Dr. Moore. He never asks me a name or school, which I really appreciate. And I want to say that publicly because a lot of people don't realize that that's what happens, is that's part of our job, is to filter those things. And I'm not saying everybody needs to call us all the time with all their concerns, but I, I do think in this case, we've had some people that have been able to vent, or to question, or to ask us questions. And I've been able to directly get that answer immediately and/or get the reason why we can't. And I appreciate the fact that he, he is able to tell me that information and not quiz me about who is asking and what school. And, and I appreciate that because I think that that really shows for his professionalism, but also the trust that's there. So I appreciate that. The other thing, seating chart. I don't think I've ever taught without a seating chart, so this is not something new. I think it's just a new tool to use, but what's important that I don't think was mentioned is the fact that seating charts are valuable for emergencies. For when a substitute comes into your room, so that they know who is who in case of an emergency. They are able to take that seating chart, take those list of names and know what's going on in your, in your classroom. This is, I think, a beneficial thing that we have that I wish I had, because I had to draw the little boxes and all that, so I, I understand what you're talking about. But this is not something new. This is something I think is just a really great tool that we're able to use. The only reason why I brought up the seating charts earlier today is because I just wanted to make sure that people understand that that's not information that's really privy to anybody else, except for the teacher in that classroom, principal, and then district leadership. Not even to board members. We don't know seating charts or anything like that, specific names. So thank you for that. And I'd just like to, again, thank staff for all their hard work. This is not easy. This has not been easy at all. I mean, it's not easy to open a school year anyway, but to go through all of these changes. And I think, I appreciate you all being so flexible with the fact that we have quizzed you and questioned you. And I appreciate the fact that I've had one-on-ones with you all, and that I've had group meetings with you all, and not with other board members, just with you guys. But, you know, you have updated me as a board member, umpteen times on all these changes. This is not something that's being thrown at us at the last second, and I appreciate that because I can't always say that that's happened in the past. But I will say that I feel very comfortable with the things that are happening because, you know, we don't know tomorrow, things might change because of whatever's going on. So I appreciate the fact that you've all been able to communicate with us, at least this board member. And, and so I'm very aware of what I'm voting on. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Justice?
Yes, thank you. And you would hope that I wouldn't have to ask this question, but as has been demonstrated over, you know, just in general, sometimes we lack common sense in certain areas. So we will not be giving perfect attendance awards anymore. That will not be something that we do in our schools.
Through the chair, we don't want to promote acknowledgements and awards that would encourage students to come to school when they may possibly be sick, so no.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. My last comment is going to echo Mrs. Barrenborg's. I am appreciative for teachers to, having the courage to reach out to board members, to be honest with them about situations that are taking place, perhaps on their school campus, with students, their concerns about their own safety, safety for their students. So I am appreciative for them having the courage. And as a board member, it isn't always easy to bring those concerns forward. I do appreciate when staff, including Dr. Moore, is responsive and gracious and recognizing that none of us are perfect. We all make mistakes and we can always take every conflict or every challenge and turn it into a learning opportunity. So thank you for that. Thank you for a wonderful day and this great reopening plan. Very excited to get school started.
All right. So let's, um, go ahead. We've had a conversation here. Let's see, we, who do we have? We need to make a motion. Do we, do we have, it's been a long conversation. All right, we've had our conversation. All good?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Five, zero. Okay. Superintendent Report. Dr. Moore, on this, or, I didn't have a chance to speak to you, but I'm hoping that you'll give us a, a short briefing on how it's been going the last week.
Like for the opening of schools, I think we've been speaking about that for the last four, regarding the opening of schools?
Right, at, at the, the school site. How, how's the week going?
Absolutely. Last week was a very good week. It was an opportunity to greet our, our teachers. Energy was high. A, a great deal of anxiety returning to see each other after what really was five months. If, if you think about it, Pam's actually counting on her fingers. Now, Matt is correct. A, a great deal of development, and the volume of work for the last three weeks has been tremendous in getting the information, creating the master schedules, fine-tuning those master schedules, and then moving to what is now the development and support to ensure effective implementation around those particular models. As we move into the rest of this week and next week, it is visiting schools, looking to ensure what we see aligns to all of the support and guidance that we have provided, preparing for an opening of schools. Dispatching the district staff into schools still needs to be done. So we are working as hard as we possibly can to get a, to get to a place where we have an effective opening. Still a lot of training to take place as it relates to the protocols and in terms of shutting down or implementing the criteria that we've discussed. But we're, we're really looking forward, as I have said earlier, to making the shift from the implementation of the plan to the quality of instruction within each of the different models. And that really will be the theme moving into the next week and a half. So we're, we're moving, we're pumping out some quality work, really looking forward, just not today because we had a board meeting, but on Monday, the opportunity actually to go to schools. And, you know, even though students aren't back yet, but it almost felt surreal to, to walk a campus and speak with teachers and see how things are going. That's something that hasn't been done, whether it's, you know, you know, a Zoom bombing into a meeting, as they call it, and, and seeing things taking place. So it was really, really encouraging to have that feeling. A lot of visits taking place over the next two weeks, still some problem solving, still massaging to do with schedules. But I'm confident we will get to a place where we feel really good about our opening of schools and setting an example as to how to open schools. Because I think when you look at what other districts are shooting to get to, we're really close to being there in terms of our reality within Indian River. So this is, I've been telling the team from the beginning, I don't know when we're going to, this work will be done. I don't know if it's going to be done on August 10th, or August 24th, or even in November or January, but we're going to return and this work will all be valuable. So I'm excited that we're to a place where we're going to be able to greet students in three different instructional models on August 24th.
That's your superintendent report?
That's it. There you go.
Perfect. All right. School Board Member Matters.
Oh, I get to go first this time? I'll go. Yeah, absolutely. So, um, just a note, I know that teachers and, and, and other healthcare professionals have said that we should practice wearing masks with, or help, practice, help our children practice wearing masks, excuse me. And I had the opportunity to take my children out this past weekend for an extended period of time, not a half an hour, running into a store and having a mask on, but wearing a mask for several hours. And it was interesting. So I would just say to parents, practice with your kids, practice having them wear masks. They're going to tell you maybe it's uncomfortable on their nose or behind their ears. See if there are different accommodations you can make with them to help them feel more comfortable. But, but definitely, it was a worthwhile experience to practice wearing masks. And I, I wish parents and teachers a lot of luck, because it, it is something that I know we need to do, but it will be challenging. So, and thank you again for a very, a very good day with a lot of reassuring information.
I'd just like to say thank you to all the staff that has come back and working hard in their classrooms and at the school level. And it's nice to see that we have a new principal in place at Osceola, and I wish him the best, Dr. Bacon. And I'd just like to say thank you to my fellow board members for a very long day, but a productive day. And again, all the hard work that was done by staff to be able to create the ever-changing plans that we're dealing with. Thank you.
Dr. Schiff or Mrs. Rosario? Go ahead.
Myself. Dr. Schiff, you want to go first?
Go ahead, Mrs. Rosario.
I just wanted to thank all of the teachers for their hard work. I know that anxieties are high and prepping and planning this year, there was a post that went out not long ago. And it was indeed a teacher who said that every teacher in the United States is now entering their first year of teaching, no matter, no matter whether they've been teaching for 20, 30 years or teaching for one day. It is a new reality and the expectations coming into this school year might be very, very different than any other year. So I just wanted to thank teachers in advance for, for all that they're doing and for really braving it out. They are now, as what was recently stated, they are essential workers. The children depend on them. They are essential to our children. And so I, I'm just grateful that we have the ability, and, and not just teachers, I'm going to say, all of our faculty and staff, CWA workers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, everybody who really works for the educational system. It's just a wonderful honor. I also wanted to ask Dr. Moore for the opportunity to kind of piggyback off of taking this, this time right now to share with the audience the millage that is coming up on our ballot. I don't believe that we are meeting again before voting, before the election. So this might be a good opportunity to remind our community. I know that I received the flyers that came in the mail, posters, and kind of like another handout. They were beautifully put together. I don't know who put those together, but they were beautifully put together, and it was really nice to receive. So, Dr. Moore, would you mind?
Absolutely. Will never miss an opportunity, as I have so often over the last five, six weeks, to talk, talk through, sorry, that was just clearing my throat, promise, the opportunity of renewing our millage. What we have is an opportunity to explore three key areas within the school district of Indian River County. We have done our research and we are putting to the voters the opportunity to look at what quality 21st century teaching and learning looks like within our system. Gone are the days of being in rows. And I think if you look at even what we're doing in the midst of COVID-19, we want to ensure students are provided with 21st century learning, the ability to connect, communicate, problem solve, use technology to solve those problems, as well as predict problems or define problems that need to be solved. Looking at social and psychological safety, I'm sorry, physical and psychological safety. Our students are returning to school after a significant amount of time of not being around or in a school environment. So social anxiety upon return is going to be key. And we need to provide and enhance the quality of support through mental health professionals, even additional counselors, really to ensure that students socially, emotionally are set and ready to engage in quality instruction within our classrooms. And when you speak of quality instruction, it's ensuring that we have the highest-paid teachers on the Treasure Coast. And those who are asked to do much should be compensated for the work that they're doing. And when you look at us in comparison to two other counties in terms of teacher pay, we're the most expensive to live, but not the least in, in terms of teacher pay. We're proffering the millage would help support teacher pay, looking at 21st century learning, integrating 21st century learning, as well as preparing the amount of support for psychological and physical safety. Thank you, ma'am. Everybody should vote on August 18th.
Yes. Thank you so much for that.
Dr. Schiff?
Yeah, thank you. Much of, of what I might have said has been covered. Big thanks to everyone. In all of our thanks to teachers, I was afraid we were going to be leaving out staff and all our other essential workers. So I'm glad that didn't happen because this, this really is maybe more than any other time I've seen, a team effort. You know, that none of this work gets done without everybody in the district having a hand in it. And I'm really grateful and honored and humbled by everything that everybody is doing. Welcome back to school, everyone, and to our, the discussion that, that we had, we all had for a while on information from teachers and, and people being afraid of coming forward. I think sometimes the issues are not simply district retaliation, but concerns about that in school. And I want to say again, anybody who knows me in this district knows that not only do I, I say I will preserve anonymity, but more importantly, I am, and I can't speak for my fellow board members, but I believe that we are only as good as the information that we have. And I have said that numerous times to people who have reached out to me. I'm only as good as the information I get. I'm not, I don't sit in schools day in and day out with you. So I don't know what's happening unless people tell me. And I really welcome that information. So please share that as it, as it's moving forward. As Mrs. Barrenborg said, we, it's what we're here for and we can't address it if we don't know it. So thank you to those who do reach out. Thank you to everybody who has worked so hard to get schools open. And see everybody on the 24th.
Oh, yes, and thank you for bringing that up. I, I had a, I had this beautiful little thank you poem I wanted to read to the staff, but I cannot get it pulled up, so I appreciate, I apologize for that. But I do, I think, I think our support staff, we always say teachers, we always say administrators. But, and we always say, our support staff is the backbone of this district. And, and you are. So thank you, Mr. Murray. Thank you to our support staff, our bus driver. And if I start naming them, I'm going to, I'm not even going to do it because I'm going to miss a, a group of our valued employees. So I, I appreciate each of you. I know, I know individuals who go into education, you don't go into it for the money, that's for sure. You go into it for the love and the passion that you have for our kids. And you go into it because of the passion for education and you believe in it and what, and the life-changing effects it can have on people's lives. So I, I want to say thank you to everyone, and I'm not going to go through the list. I want to specifically, but I am going to specifically say thank you to Officer Ragley in the back. Thank you for being here. Thank you for your service. And thank you to all the school resource officers who took the time, it's six-hour training that-
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, that you're going to be going through. And we appreciate having you on our campuses and, and also keeping our, our kids and our staff and our families safe. So thank you. Next, I, I think two weeks ago, I had sent Nancy a note that I was going to be on the road on the 19th. I was trying to figure out, could I pull over and perhaps have a connection for the meeting? And I think the 19th probably will be one of those meetings that I will be on the road. And I'll try to get connection to join- the road, and I'll try to get connection to join in on teams, but I'm not guaranteeing that I'm going to be able to. I've literally have not had a vacation with my kids for almost a year and a half, because if you remember last summer, it was pretty intense. And so we have four days before school starts, starting on the nineteenth, and I've already promised them a camper up in Georgia, and we're heading up there for a couple of days. So I'm going to try to connect them, but if not, I just want you to know ahead of time that is, that's the reason why. So we're going to move on to super, superintendent closing?
Through the chair, just blessed to be surrounded by a supporting board, a board with high expectations, who continue to push to ensure that all children receive the absolute best education possible in the school district of Indian River County. The team here, our principals, all of our, our staff, as you just mentioned, Madam Chair, are in this for all of the right reasons. So the complexity of this work that we're doing is really challenging, but at the same time, really rewarding to connect and do this work with people who are equally willing to put their shoulder to the wheel and work equally as hard to support one another in trying to identify what is the best way to create new paths, new ways of doing work. This isn't, let's replicate what someone else is doing. I can honestly say, the creation of this document that you just approved is, is hours and hours of work. Once again, Dr. Jacobs, for coordinating and putting together the thoughts of all these people. Wow, if I was starting a school system, you'd be the first person I would, I would go and take with me. Absolutely, just quality work.
What'd you just say?
What?
What'd you just say?
She's very good at her job.
And did you say if you were going to leave, you would take it with you?
No, if I was starting my own, the school system, like if you were starting a school system.
You're not going anywhere.
No, absolutely not.
We know where you live.
A place with no furniture.
Sorry, go ahead.
That's all, yeah.
All righty. All right. Without, we're going to adjourn at seven fifty-three. Thank you.